Hit the pause, which is not recording. Um, right here, right?
Taxpayers kind of cheap.
Hang on one second. Anne, um, they can't hear. Is it just, uh? Hang on one second, guys. I was gonna say, just her or everybody?
Sound check?
Oh, yeah, they can't hear anything. Fighting.
Sound check? Yeah, I got blasted.
Yeah.
Give a thumbs up if you can hear us, John.
Yeah, I think we're good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready?
Yep.
Sorry, Anne. All right, um, yeah. Regarding, um, the five million dollar grant money we got, was any of that money due to COVID? Like, because the, it was during COVID and the current police station had mold and, you know, the could, lack of ventilation, was any of that five million dollars COVID money?
No, none at all.
Okay.
It's the first and largest ever Borough Award from the state of New Jersey due to the hard work of Chief Culler and our department. Has nothing to do with it. Good question.
A lot of people got COVID money, a lot of people got COVID. For various things, yeah. Now, um, we had asked for a site plan review and we never got it. I remember when it was, the site plan was on a big piece of cardboard and Colleen walked here and set it over there on the table. And we saw it as we left and then it was, um, we were having closed session, so we hoped that we would see it at some point. Well, we didn't and I brought it up. And Colleen, you had mentioned that, well, it, um, it, uh, the planning board gave it a quick review. I, it was nowhere on the commissioners' agenda or minutes for work sessions or commissioners' meetings. It was no mention at all on the agenda or the minutes of the planning board. I went to the planning board, your friend Susan, uh, said, oh, we just, you know, took a quick look at it as a courtesy. So we don't know what's happening over there. We'd like to know. It's, um, and there's things that Bank of America was supposed to do for the residents that need to be done. For example, they stole water from the house. They had no outside faucets on the building. So when they wanted to mix concrete, they came and just took the water from the house. And if they had to, uh, water shrubbery, their, um, underground water system, sprinkler system was broken, so they would come and just take water. Normally, they're supposed to, landscapers are supposed to bring their portable water. Well, they didn't, so I mean, that's an issue. Uh, the lighting was all wrong. They, they had purchased in, in the parking lot, um, what we call crime lights, and in Hialeah, Florida, they have high crime areas and they use these crime lights with, and it makes the whole city look like it's daytime at night. And that's, they put leftover lights at Bank of America. And these things were supposed to be changed for the residents, uh, by Bank of America and no one got a, a chance to say anything. Now, we'd like to know, me in particular, the subdivision of the property. Because on the other side of the red brick belongs to the house. There's a section on that other side that actually belongs to Bank of America. And there were two trees there. And they had a red brick wall and all the way down one side, and then it made an L shape. There were two huge trees there. And Bank of America had to put the red brick road behind those two trees, huge oak trees, thirty, forty feet tall. Because they couldn't put it in front of trees because it belonged to the owners of the property. So eventually, the trees got larger and the roots were coming and they were compromised and the trees had been taken out. But that property behind that white shed belongs to Bank of America. I'm saying, I know it's ours, but it just makes it more convenient. But that's Bank of America. We want to know what's happening. Are you going to come in and, and now that red brick fence, uh, red brick wall is a wooden fence? What are you going to take that off, out and use that property? We have many questions, uh, that we're not getting answers to. And no way any commissioner would know these things. It has to come from the residents. And, um, there was a, a, a big robbery there. Uh, we're concerned about the Sally Court. We don't, we didn't think we had that type of criminal that we would need a Sally Court. There's talk that between the thefts at the Acme and now putting a, a, a police station there, that maybe residents need to get arms for protection. And I'm one of them. And I never thought in all my life that I would get a gun. But I'm considering it. Because of the location and this Sally Court, you know, this is where criminals are supposed to be kept for protection of other people that are inside the building. Well, so, all right. There's a lot going on with the bank and, um, we'd like to see the site plan and we'd like to be able to know what's going on and give some input.
Okay, thanks, Anne. I'll follow up with you.
Hi, I'm Kim Buster, 48, Norman Avenue. Literally, um, just wanted to know, um, any some updates on the Bancroft timeline? Are you guys on, on track with, um, what we needed to get done for the May, um, the May deadline? And, um, I attended the planning board meeting, um, when they were discussing, um, the development, the developments property, how much is going to get developed? It was seven acres versus this eight point two. And I just wanted to make sure, um, when will that decision be made? And I know that there is, and you guys know that there is a stone building, uh, basically right in the crosshairs of that Illinois line. And I'm just here to advocate again, um, that the stone house stay in Haddonfield Public Property. Um, I can envision an amazing heritage trail that would incorporate the history of that stone building. Um, and I'm really glad to hear that Doug Rauschenberger is scheduled to come talk with you guys about the history of the, the stone building. It's phenomenal and it's really exciting. And it would be an amazing asset to having this park finally developed and seeing effort all these years of advocacy that, um, it would just be a real asset. So I just wanted to see where and when that decision will be made and when we can come back and talk about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Kim, when is Doug Rauschenberger speaking? No one's told me about that.
No, when, after May, uh, when he's ready with his research, he'll be invited to a work session.
Oh, okay. News to me, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Chris Lenny, 360, Norman Avenue. Um, I agree with everything that Kim has researched and said about this, um, this, uh, building, this stone building is a really a diamond in the rough. We, it would be a really shame for it to be surrounded by high-rise apartment buildings. Um, and to enable us to have that, hopefully, have you guys use your phenomenal negotiating skills to down the road, cut it back to the seven acres so that this building could be properly incorporated into the little bit that we're getting in return. It could be another historic aspect of Haddonfield, which we don't seem to have too much anymore. People don't, even seem to mention it so much anymore with all the things that have been going on in the buildings, the houses coming down and the congestion and now this giant development. It's, um, very disappointing. I've lived here for over forty-five years and, uh, so much has changed. Progress is good, but not all of it. Um, so that's my wish on that is that we at least, that it throws a bone and we get at least that little building, which could, hopefully, maybe we could even get the, um, developers to help, you know, put a new roof or do whatever. In the process, I know you will reach a point where you're going to have to negotiate something. They're going to want something more than they already have, so I just hope you use that, keep that in your back pocket. Um, secondly, um, this is a two twelve thing I happened to read today that, um, I read in Haddonfield today, the newspaper. David, um, Hunter very eloquently spanked you guys for, um, not issuing a proclamation that nobody even knows much about the date, the significance, that April sixth, eighteen seventy-five was the anniversary, um, April sixth, yesterday was the, uh, anniversary of the April sixth, eighteen seventy-five, um, milestone when Haddonfield was incorporated. We have endless proclamations that come out and this of all things should have been acknowledged and celebrated. I know it was a tragedy.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Anyone else in the room? Being none, is there anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to the commissioners at this time? Being none. Um, the proclamation, the Arbor Day proclamation is going to move to the twenty-eighth. It turns out that they aren't actually going to plant the tree until May fifth, I believe it is. May, May second. So we can put, you know, May or April twenty-fifth is Arbor Day. We can put the proclamation for Arbor Day on the twenty-eighth meeting and then they will read it at the May second, uh, tree planting. Next item on the agenda is to discuss use of Borough property. Um, first one is the annual skirmish. Uh, members of the fire department, the fire officials and the police department and I met with the members of the skirmish to go over, um, some possible changes this year. They still would like to use Library Point for the location of the British base. Um, but rather than closing any roads for the mini skirmish, they will just walk over to the King's Highway portion that would be closed from between Haddon and Grove. Um, we discussed with them some ways to better utilize the full length of Haddon and Grove. So hopefully, um, we'll see some of those changes. But other than that, it is basically the exact same request as they received last year. There will be no open fire permit needed this year. Uh, there'll be no cooking.
Is that because we were under drought condition?
No, um, they, they moved forward with the permit and then their cook wasn't able to come, so they didn't need it and they don't believe the cook is coming this year.
Oh, actually, open fire.
Yeah, they were going to actually have a, an open fire to, to, yeah. So. Any questions? Are we okay to move forward with this approval?
Uh, two questions, what will be the status of Haddon Ave at that point?
Um, in June, they are, they should be done with the New Jersey American project. Um, and we are finalizing, uh, Remington and Vernick is in the process of finalizing the plan to get them to the county so that we can get ready to go out to bid for the road portion.
So it'll likely be fine?
It'll be fine and they're not using Haddon Avenue at all. They're going to walk the sidewalk.
Okay.
They originally had requested like closure up at King's Highway to do a mini skirmish up there. But that is rather difficult to, to get all of that accomplished and they were like, we, uh, walking through the whole process. They can walk the sidewalks over to the King's Highway portion and then have the mini skirmish in the King's Highway portion and then the bigger skirmish later on in the day.
Okay. What will be the status of the sidewalk by J. West?
That I'll have to follow up on.
So it'll have to be on the other side across by the firehouse?
Right. I'm, I would hope by then that they will be done inside, so that'll be back open. But I'll, but I'll check on that.
If you think. Otherwise, I'm fine moving forward with the skirmish.
Okay, the next one is host is requesting use of Tatum Park for their grandparents' Day event on April nineteenth from eleven AM to two PM. Um, next one is the farmer's market. We finally did receive the request from farmer's market to use Kingsport again. This is an annual request. They've been there for many years now. Um, it is from eight thirty to one thirty each Saturday. And it is starting May twenty-fourth this year, going through October eleventh, with the exception of the craft fair. They do not get to use the Kingsport for the craft fair.
Should we offer them any alternative space?
We have in the past, we have in the past, they've just decided it works best if they, if they just kind of skip that week and come back.
As long as we make the offer to them.
We've had it where we've tried to mingle them in and it just really doesn't work out well.
Yeah, sure.
So, and having it in another location, trying to train people to go to a different location for one weekend. Yeah, that doesn't work either.
Sure.
Um, they're good with rules and regs, so no calls without after hanging around after cleaning up on time. Yep, okay, reminded them again, yes. Okay, great.
They drafted the, um,
Yes, the rules and regulations for their, um, their users.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a copy of those. Are we okay with farmer's market then?
Yes.
Moving on, the next one is Flag Day. This is, uh, portions of Kingsport, um, for after the farmer's market ends on June fourteenth. This is down by the flag, obviously, like flagpole, obviously. Um, And this is early in the day, right, Sharon? Like afternoon hours, so it's not going to interfere with Juneteenth? Yes, I believe so. Okay. They start at like two o'clock.
And then Juneteenth I have as being from five to eight.
Yeah, but what, what is the Flag Day involving?
It's going to be max hour. Probably even less. I mean, we used to do it, what we used to do was fifteen minutes.
Is this the one another commissioner used to spearhead?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the raising of the flag and it's like what, what I did at Tatum last year, right?
They, they're going to have some singing, Rosie, Timmerling is going to be a part of it and trying to get, you know, kids to sing and that type of thing again.
Okay.
As long as they're saying happy birthday to me, that would be great. My birthday is June fourteenth. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that description. Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, and lastly, we have three events from Human Relations Commission. The first one, I'll let you say something. Sure, Eid or Eid. Um, so this is the second one this year. We just celebrated Eid on March thirtieth and this one would be Eid al-Aha, which is the twenty-ninth, the month of June, you would typically celebrate it. Um, the lunar calendar is what you follow for the holidays in the Muslim religion. So, um, essentially, this would just be a small event at Library Point, um, incorporating library programming and members of Human Relations Commission, we would host it at volunteers.
Uh, is that four to nine the whole time or is that coming and going?
Uh, we would be set up there the whole time, four to nine.
All right.
So just like we did with Lunar New Year, like there was the, um, Chinese dancers, there was making bowl buns, there was, um, arts and crafts, so there would be ongoing activations there.
All right, and bathrooms, that sort of thing?
They would use the library.
Okay.
So no need for porta potters.
Library will stay open until then?
Yes. Any other questions on that one?
It's sad that you have, I actually asked a question, do they have enough police?
Yes, the police have approved all of the events. Yeah, it is bad. Um, the next one is for six five. This is Pride Prep, so this is really, um, essentially a build off of the, the ride to Pride that we've done last year. What we did was, um, glitter and paint, base painting and tattoo, you know, uh, kids tattoos, which wash off. Uh, not real tattoo artistry, um, at Library Point again, but because it's encouraging the ride to Pride and in conjunction with Haddon Township's event, Kingsport is a more central location. And then for those who aren't going to Haddon Township, there would be more of a presence right after the kids get out of school. They could converge in Kingsport as opposed to getting all the way to the library. Um, a couple of middle school Girl Scout troops who get involved in this, along with library staff as well. Any questions?
Yeah, same thing, bathrooms, number of people?
We don't anticipate needing bathrooms, we never have in the past. Um, and it, with it being Kingsport, I think people could, we would be encouraging them to patronize the businesses as well.
Okay, well, I just, so for the next two, I just am looking at the, the times and more concerned on the Juneteenth one that it starts to infringe on restaurant time in the court. And I know we're trying to be sensitive to how we use the court versus outdoor dining or anything else that's going on at that time of year.
Yes, great point. So we actually have a backup in there. Um, Joanna, is the backup included in the notes? So we just met with Adrian Rhodes of the Preserving Black Haddonfield History and then Human Relations. Okay, yeah, so our backup date exactly for this reason. Um, because what we're thinking of doing is like as a nod to the culture, we want to have potentially barbecue or other elements. And to your point, we don't want to infringe on gas and meat or the bogati or, so, um, we've talked about actually as an alternative would be mechanic streak and, uh, in the parking lot area, just as we did the Jurassic Park movie and things after, um, the Hattie Birthday. Um, because that also set up more space and block that area off. But the thought is if it's a very small event initially, um, it, we would have live music, et cetera. So it would all be the front side of the court away from gas and meat feeding.
Okay, kind of like the, with the Lunar New Year celebration, it's at the front of the heart.
Yeah, and this is the first year we're really putting all this energy into it. We, we previously have done the walking tours and stuff at the point. Um, we originally were thinking of doing a barbecue at Centennial Field, uh, like an old school cookout, block party. But you can't really dance on that grass field and so hence we wanted a place with concrete so that, um, we didn't have to pay for a dance floor.
Sure.
And so we can have traditional dances. Um, we're thinking of inviting African dancers, but then also having more of Sound of Philadelphia and, um, black music throughout, I guess, three to four time periods. So it's, it's coming together really nicely, but I appreciate that concern because we, we share it. Any other questions?
No, other than, I mean, if, if, if there's an alternative. I'm glad there's a backup because one of the things I would love to encourage is more programming on mechanic and the, and the, if, if anything, the Super Bowl has proven, the, uh, rally in the alley has proven that it is a viable alternative to closing down the street. It's cheaper for some events that have to cover with police coverage, uh, for public works. It just, it works. We already know how to support Patsyella's and the other businesses there. Downtown Cookies, we can figure out, you know, and something more permanent for their parking situation back there, uh, for those types of days. And it's just like the thinking small part versus thinking bigger. It's, everything you just described sounds really great. It sounds like it's whole for a whole lot more than maybe thirty people.
Yeah.
Uh, so, well, hopefully, we,
You, you actually, I think the thirty people fit better in Kingsport.
Oh, no, I do, I'm saying that's thinking small though.
Yeah, you're, you're there and I think, aren't you taking, aren't they taking, um, signing, signups for this? I thought I had heard.
For volunteering or for participating, I mean?
No, I meant for, for, for coming to the event to make sure there was enough food.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, with the signups, whether it's going to be on Kingsport or have to move to mechanic to, to a larger staff. And I agree with you, it can work very well at mechanic, but it's also,
To match the crowd.
You don't want to, not that this can't go there, that's not what I'm saying at all, but in using it constantly, you are going to get pushback from the retailers over there.
And the residents.
And the residents that live there. So, you know, it's one thing to, um, use it for different things, you know, throughout the year.
Sure.
Using it constantly can become, because it can be a little difficult with some of that when you're, when you're taking away all that parking from all the businesses and then having to deal with giving certain businesses parking on the guaranteed parking on the King's Highway. You, you are starting to limit all the parking.
I just think it's worth the conversation.
Yep.
You know, longer term, you know, instead of just guessing that people will be upset about it, actually hear from the residents and have them come and talk about their concerns and see if they can be alleviated so that we can have a space to compete with some of the other towns that have permanent spaces for these things. I wouldn't, for one, don't want to lose business to Haddon Township or to Pikes, you know, with their station avenue setup. Um, you know, so, but I have no problem with approving this. I'm glad to know that there's an alternative that could.
And what we can do is just note for, we, I'll, I'll be part of the next human relations commission. I'll let them know to update you guys or the new commissioners after the election, um, with.
Thank for your vote of confidence, but yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yep. Are we okay with all the events?
I am. Yes.
All right, moving on, uh, the next item is to discuss the transfer of pilot for Lincoln slash Hardity Commons. Um, back in two thousand and one, Haddonfield entered into a pilot agreement with Ingerman. We were the building when it was first constructed. Um, that agreement goes for thirty years, there's still a couple of years left to it. It ends in twenty, it ends in twenty thirty-one, uh, the end of twenty thirty, I believe. Um, so they are looking to sell to MRK Partners, Inc., but in order to do so, they need to obtain your permission and agreement to transfer the pilot agreement.
It doesn't add any time to it, it just transfers the existing one?
Yeah, I think the other thing we'll have to talk to, um, Mary Beth about when we talk, discuss fourth round because this would.
Yeah. I think the other thing we'll have to talk to Mary Beth about when we discuss fourth round, because this would end potentially during the fourth round, is we're going to want to go back to them and discuss putting that easement in place for another period of.
Co-terminian?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it runs.
Because otherwise, we're, you know, you get, then lose that.
Like in Barrington.
Yeah, right. I mean, yeah, that caught up fast to have news.
Yeah.
That was a problem.
So we're gonna want to have that conversation. Now, I believe the company that they're reselling to is the same type of business, which tends to be, you know, senior citizen housing. So they probably will be amenable to it. It's certainly something we can have a conversation with them before passing the resolution, if you want.
I'd be more comfortable to know what their, what their longer term plans are. We don't want to be holding the bag for affordable units in the senior category in the middle of our round four obligation. Nor have been happened what happened in the past few years. Not ours.
Yep. Any other questions on the transfer? And if there's no other questions, are you okay moving forward? Assuming that the information we received is okay.
Yes, but yes, let's ask the question, please, of would they be willing to consider
Yep.
A long-term deep restriction beyond or upon expiration?
Yep, I will do that. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss personal service appointment, professional service appointments. And two that were out for RFPs. The first is the financial advisor. We received three proposals. The first one was from NW Financial Group. They are currently our financial advisor. Acacia Financial Group and Phoenix Advisors. Do we want to make a decision or do you want to have further conversation in closed session?
That's up to you. I agree. Be happy to talk about it out here or in person.
Existing for both.
I am as well.
Okay, so we're fine with it?
institutional knowledge actually has value. And there is no reason to save a penny and lose a pound.
Okay. And you're administrative agent, you only received the one they've been doing, they've been working well, so.
Yeah, they're super responsive and they've helped us get a lot going in a short time.
And sure, whatever is our obligation when we put out requests and we get one proposal back.
You get to make your choice. You can either choose that one or you can go back out.
Right. But a lot of times, going back out means we get one again.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. And we don't really have any control over that.
No.
Some, some terms, some not saying this at all specifically about affordable housing, but they give you up the, the relation companies out there.
Yeah, that is a rumor.
It's a rumor, but it's a, it's one that, you know, we could ask five times. We get one response back. Uh, we have to have that service. It's, it's a common question that people come and say, is it a setup? No, I mean, we openly put it out. However, it happens, it happens. Whether we're victims or beneficiaries, that's a word that you can choose to use to describe it, but we need the service and they provide it currently and continue to want to provide it.
Yes.
When else does?
Okay, so we'll have that added to a reservation for the agenda. Next one is to discuss the outdoor marketing graphic display permits. According to our code, something we haven't gotten around to changing yet, when we change some of the other ones. The construction office approves it and then it actually has to require your approval. So there are two that are in front of you.
Eight Kings Court and three something.
And we already have an existence out there. That's what I'm saying is that, I mean, this is like in line with everything else that we have out there that we approve.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, these are probably just two brand new ones. So the, the ones that have, get renewed every year, they probably haven't sent to you.
Yeah.
It was, I, I think it was something with transition with Oaks in the department. They were just doing, you know, previous people just started doing it themselves and not sending it through for a revolution. We've changed it in other ordinances when we've been bringing them up to date. We just haven't gotten around to this one yet to make that change.
They're required to take them in at night?
Sorry?
And they're required to take them in, not just paint them up outside or anything, make it look like a, you know, where I grew up. Or change everything down?
No, they, they are supposed to bring their signs in at night.
Alright.
Um, are we okay with the two? Plays?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Moving on, the next item is the draft agenda for the four twenty-eight meeting. Frank, you and I spoke this weekend about one of the items that had got brought up.
Yes.
So Frank had reached out to me Saturday or Sunday discussing the proclamation for town's one hundred and fiftieth incorporation.
Anniversary of incorporation versus.
Anniversary of the town.
Yeah.
Misabout it. So.
And Frank had asked that we place an agenda or a proclamation on April twenty-eighth. So we were going to be bringing that up. Thanks to the resident, we actually, well, it's going to be something we're talking about.
It helps when people bring things to us in advance.
Yep.
Always can learn more and do better.
So, yes, so we're, we're going to add that on under C. Obviously, the Arbor Day will move back over to this agenda. Deanna has a whole bunch of meetings that she's finalizing and will be on. You have your two ordinances.
Who's drafting that?
Drafting what?
The proclamation for the
Incorporation?
Hundred and fiftieth anniversary incorporation.
You haven't drafted it yet.
Well, I, who?
A lot of time usually.
Yeah, I do.
Did we run it by Doug, please? Or, or the library or the? Who would be the best person? Doug, yeah, right. Just to make sure that we get it right. So there, so just to give a little bit of background on this, there was discussion around this, which was brought up before about, oh, do you commemorate the anniversary of incorporation, or do you commemorate the anniversary of this? Out of this, two different dates.
Sure.
Yeah.
And so, and it was mentioned in the article, which I also read, we were not approached by our historians on said topic. So, you know, I have no problem. To me, it's a fairly innocuous and it's a, it's a nice gesture, but it's not that.
It's not that we said, no, we won't do this.
Yeah, there's, there's precedent for what, you know, you do celebrate and what you, what you do not. So, but I, I have no problem in making a proclamation. I think it's a, it's a nice gesture, but, you know, we had discussed which date is your starting point?
And, and the thought was not to create a committee and make a big deal out of the incorporation when you were making a big deal previously out of the date the town was, that we were three hundred years old, three hundred years old twice.
Yeah.
Well, the twice Centennial Committee, I mean, that was a big deal.
Mm-hmm. And, and we, and we did. We had, we had a committee and we did celebrate it.
But it's kind of like my favorite line in the movie Trading Places. At the very end, it's, should we have lobster, crack crab for dinner or for lunch? The answer is on a hoof, right? So whatever date, anybody who wants to put the energy into bringing to our attention, putting in some of the work, drafting it. We're more than happy to officially create a proclamation on it, but as, as Frank said, it's, it's it, it's sometimes easier to put it in front of us than it is to shame us, it's usually.
Yeah, it's also welcome. I mean, we have a history. I know that in the short time we've been here, we've probably had celebrated more in proclamations than many past administrations because we fostered an inclusive community and celebrated things like other faiths and other cultures and changes in history and autism, for example. You know, in the past, people didn't recognize those things. So I can't speak for myself after April, but, or May, but I love when people come to me proactively and say, hey, will you help us or will you do something for us? That's the only way anything gets done. So happy to consider these things when they come up.
Uh, in, in, in conjunction with the proclamation for Interfaith Caregivers Month. There is going to be activities and it's called Stand Up for Aging that the Maple Kay is going to be sponsoring. And that's going to go, it's always going to correspond with the banner that. To go on the highway.
Okay.
The proclaim may, yep, already worked on the date. It's the week of May nineteenth that it'll go up. We'll have the banner next week. It's two-sided, so if there's anything that wants to high with it, that's fine. If it flies by itself, it's a two-sided. Generously done.
Okay, and you have your resolutions. Those that are innocuous, you go.
Oh, no, please don't skip me. Will, will we be approving minutes on this?
Yes, I did send you that.
Oh, okay. I just want to make a little bigger deal on that.
Finalizing, she and Colleen Met and over some, some of the issues and.
We spent three hours working hard on it.
Thank you very much.
Anytime, anytime.
Especially with.
Well, while you weren't listed as a commissioner when you were a commissioner, so we.
Yes, well, that was, that was important.
Yeah, yeah, we all make mistakes and we all need to, to get them done. So, yes.
Well, the reason that I push it so hard is it's the last opportunity for you to put a stamp on words that you want to stand behind for, for, for perpetuity, right? So otherwise, there are awful measures that we have to do to go back and set minutes.
Yep.
So thank you for putting in the effort.
Of course.
Almost a final gift to the, to the commission. Okay, thank you. So hopefully we'll be caught up on those and we can make it a routine process. From the years on the school board, learn as very first thing you do is the minutes, because once you fall behind, it's very hard to catch up. As you're feeling right now. But thanks.
Any other questions on the agenda?
On the monthly departmental reports. What's the status of the audit? Any?
The auditors, the auditors are due in this week or next week?
Next week.
Oh, so it won't be reportable by the twenty eighth?
No, their due date is, I believe, July first. Okay, we're, we're on a different schedule than school.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I don't mind that. I just, you know, my request is for them to present the audit report in public and walk the count through it. So that they can understand that. Just the process. There's a check and a balance for everything, including the books.
Yeah, no, they come in to start their review next week. And that should only take a couple of weeks and then they'll shut up and get to us.
And then the report of our twenty twenty-four financial health, we can put that for future meeting as well. Since Alex has put in so much work for that dollar bill graphic.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Easy to, there's an easy to read budget, then there's an even easier to understand budget, and that's a picture worth a thousand dollars. Thank you for doing that, Sharon.
No problem. Any other questions on the, on the agenda?
We are meeting, just to give you two an update, because it's out of recreation. We are meeting with heads of all of the sports. Town sport and travel sport organizations. They're sending two members each. The meeting's next Tuesday, the fourteen. No, sorry, Monday the fourteenth at seven PM. They were given homework, so we sent the first reading of the ordinance. We sent the draft field policy, field usage policy, and then the recreation manual. And asked them to come, we sent them Word document versions and asked them to come with redline versions and comments about all the documents. And our goal is to hammer out a process and a document structure that everyone can live with. So, and if they can't, I'll probably move to table twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh one and just keep working on it. People are happy with it. And if it's, if it's me, if it's someone else, that's fine, but I, I think what this town and our teams need is to know their responsibilities, our responsibilities, their expectations, our expectations. We are the owners of the field. They are great stewards of the field and there's a ton of tradition out there. We just want it all written down, because handshakes, while they've worked for many years. So did the spirit of volunteerism in all these groups. And, you know, as a firsthand witness in baseball. Travel sports are dominating local sports and there's definitely pressure for field usage. One of our things is ninety-five percent town usage. We had a new league pop up this, this season, American Legion, sponsored by Post Thirty-Eight. Every kid on the team is going to be from Haddonfield. Where do they fit in? Well, they fit into the policy. And so it's one of those, as long as we can write it down, we can stand behind our responsibilities. They can understand theirs. And I'm really hopeful that we can hash it out or at least get far enough along where everyone recognizes progress. And if not, we just need more time and it'll be left for the next commission. So as long as we're on that topic, and yesterday you had a discussion on it, I, I've had discussions with people over time on this, and I'll, I'll take it from a public work standpoint. You know, a field that's used in the fall and the field that's used in the spring has two different needs. You know, if you see in the fall, you don't in the spring, you know, and there's more mowing of the grass in the, in the spring than there is the fall, vice versa. So, you know, my ask, and I've said this several times, is that, you know, every sports team has to view it in terms of the continuity of time. And saying that, like, well, we, we do this because we don't have that, you know, that responsibility. Yeah, but someone has a responsibility to seed it, even though you don't, like, you're benefiting from the seeds of someone else planted, both literally and figuratively, you know. So you, you have to acknowledge that both financially and in, you have respect for the fields. There has to be continuity, because, you know, if, you know, the, the, the coach and the head of it and some of that, and suddenly his kid decides he doesn't want to play anymore, and then you know, then I'm no longer there, you have a coach, and then who's the person making responsibility and decisions, whatever else? I kind of envision like a continuity of what happens year, year round. And, you know, people have to be engaged that and realize that, like, you know, that, that field gets used, you know, year round, it needs to be maintained, you know, year round. Has to be, you know, kind of, you know, two people involved with it on each of those teams. We say the military, like, two is one, one is done. So the person gets reload or the kid decides to quit. You need to have someone else that knows where all the skeletons are in the closet and kind of take it over and then find someone else and be able to kind of, you know, keep that conversation going. And we need receipts. We need to know what has been invested from us and from the teams to know the total cost of maintain, maintenance in the spring and in the fall. I agree with your two-person thing. That's why we asked for two representative for each. I mean, the school boards here tonight, they were talking last Thursday about having representatives come to all of our meetings. And they bring two on two different voting blocks, right? You're not in the same year. Right, so that there's continuity even that. I mean, they even talked about that. So I completely agree with their, for, because I also know and how this is, and Sharon and I have seen this, is that if you don't have that mapped out, it falls to public works. And instead of trimming trees and mowing lawns and taking out trash and doing whatever else, we have to assign people over there and, you know, and then other things don't get done, and then you hear those complaints, so. Or you hire a company. And, you know, it's funny, so Little League right now, soccer, they've hired companies to help take care of that. We just need to know what they do and how much they've spent in lieu of us having to do it. Because at some point, as you said, when the continuity chain breaks, we're still responsible. We just need to know who to call and how much it's going to be. And it either becomes the effort, I, I, I use a crude term, you either give equity or sweat equity. You know, it won't take either to, to take care of our public property.
Yeah.
But in the absence of sweat equity, we need the equity to do it, because as, as you said, hiring more people isn't the answer when our biggest line item is salary and benefits.
Yeah.
Uh, so it just doesn't happen. It's, and when we do it, it's all prevailing wage. We have to go out, we have to get bids. And when our organizations take the mantle of responsibility, they have some more freedom. They have freedom of money and they have freedom of decision. We just need to know it happens so that we know that there's a field that's playable. That's really all that matters.
Yeah.
Me. It's, the bill we send is the commitment that field needs. How it's paid and who does it, to me, it's irrelevant. And it's, it's kind of like historic habits. As long as they get fixed, I don't care what your business model is, as long as you're putting money into the building. Same thing here. I don't really care what the usage is, as long as it's ready for. Uh, same thing here, I don't really care what the usage is, as long as it's ready for the next usage.
Yep.
Um, that's what matters to you. And, uh, when you look at recreation through the lens of finance and administration, it's a much different way to look at it than it is through public works. So, uh. Your guys have to be part of the conversation, as long as they're gonna be responsible for doing it, as long as the teams are still taking responsibility. Uh, and hiring for it, and showing us the money, what I really worry most about, it, when I. Once Bancroft gets passed and you start looking at this, is the biggest concern for me is improvements to public property. Without us knowing it, so, uh. Just today, I saw a comment about the windows being popped out at the snack bar, well, where did that snack bar come from? I came to many meetings over the years, I never heard you guys approve the construction of a snack bar at Centennial Field, kind of just showed up, and it's great. But now it's ours, the, the perception is, it's the boroughs to go out and fix a window when it's popped out, did we even pay for that thing?
No, that.
It showed up.
They did, no, they did come and ask.
Oh, they did?
Had to go in front of planning board.
Oh, they did, okay, good.
But it's, but it's owned, it's, it's, it was put there by football.
Which is great, I'm glad to hear that it went through the regular process.
Yes.
I mean, everybody knows the story about field. Little League complex, right, it is, I don't, I'm not saying it in public meetings, if anybody wants to know the story. Uh, it's long ago, but, uh, you know, that's the old Haddonfield way, the handshake and, you know. Work over the weekend, and I'm glad it wasn't that.
No, it's not that. Okay, moving on. We, so our May work session is scheduled for May twelve. And our election is May thirteen, and seeing as that is generally, the work session is generally when. The new administration gets a chance to sit down and talk and pick each, what each person wants and stuff, it would make sense if we move that date.
I really want one last meeting, Sharon.
Frankly, Colleen, I'm, it is, this isn't for you, but I want a meeting before, not the election. Our drop dead date with the fair share thing, so I wanna make sure our entire packet is ready to go. Delivered on Judge Schweitzer's desk, and we are clear.
I, one hundred percent agree.
That's fine, we still need to schedule then a special meeting for the following.
I, I, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, no, our deadline is the twelve.
No, no, I said we keep that, oh, you wanna move the twelve.
Do we move the twelve up, so poor Deanna, who has to work the election day, I always feel bad for the clerk's office when there's a meeting the Monday night before an election. So do we look at? Do we look at the Monday prior, I mean, I'll say this, if we come out of the April twenty-eighth meeting and all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed for fair share and Bancroft. I'm fine to not have another one, but if we come out of the twenty-eighth and it's eleven o'clock at night, and we haven't accomplished everything. Then I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be doing my job in the last weeks in office, because the new people won't get officially certified and sworn in. Until at least the week of the sixty, seventy. Eight, twen- what do you, the twentieth.
So are you recommending we move it to the fifth?
That would, yeah.
The fourth meeting to the fifth, that gives us a little breathing room.
And if we need to cancel.
And if we need to cancel, yeah, if we wanna cancel, we can.
Okay, but then I would still recommend we have one on the nineteen or twenty.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that, too.
May fifth, and we'll just be a special meeting only for.
Bancroft Fair Share.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Public or work session? I mean, not that.
No, I, I would rather.
I think it has to be a, a work, an action meeting, actually, yeah, actually, yeah, actually.
And then.
At seven thirty then.
What do you guys wanna do, I mean, it's go, it's gonna be potentially be canceled.
No, it's still action meetings are seven thirty.
Yeah, it's seven thirty, okay.
And, uh, and then the nineteenth would be a work session?
Yes.
That would be, yeah.
But the, the action will be swearing in the new.
They actually get sworn in on the twenty.
Oh, at the action.
Twenty-six, yeah, it's the, it's where, first opportunity for the new group to get together. Pick who's mayor, who, who's gonna be department, you know, whose department's getting what, is there any other changes? Filling you in on, you know, some of the things that are going on, you know, making some of those beginning decisions at first time as a group. So then you take action on it, and everybody gets formally sworn in, you'll get sworn in before, but everybody formally gets. Sworn in with their families and stuff.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, kind of this thing.
Yeah, yeah, so if there's anybody that, you know, if you win, and there's somebody you want to do the swearing in for you specifically. They would come to the action meeting. Okay, so we're gonna have a special meeting on May fifth, seven thirty, the work session will be moved to May nineteen. At six thirty.
And then the twenty-sixth.
And the twenty-sixth is your regular action.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Cause it more, more of that.
Correct. Okay, just two items before we move on to commissioner items.
I can't do May fifth, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm just thinking of that now, because it wasn't on my calendar as, as a meeting night, so I know I cannot do May fifth, so we wanna pick a different night.
But is there a night that week you can do?
Yeah, I mean, uh, what, what do we have, partnership for Haddonfield has something on May eighth.
Planning board is the sixth.
But that, so I don't know that we have anything, mostly significant, I don't know if we have anything.
They're still using this room.
Oh, yeah, there's that.
I mean, you could, you could do Zoom only if you wanted to.
I'd rather not.
Yeah, so then.
Can they do, can they go to the, or can we go down to the courtroom?
You can, you don't have Zoom. It would just be an in-person meeting at that point.
Unless you did it all Zoom, everybody on Zoom, that's, I just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the eighth, it's the partnership girls' night out, I don't have to be at that for its duration, that's a coming, oh, I go downtown and talk to all the businesses, but. That Monday night, I absolutely can't make.
I don't wanna tread on Thursday, the eighth day, uh, work session for you guys? All right, so the eighth would be clear, you.
I'm okay with the eighth. Frank, you good? I'm good with that.
Yeah, usually Thursdays are fun, yeah, Thursdays are good for me, it's a non-onfire night.
Okay, so you're doing the eighth. Yes, please, and thank you.
That guy's going to paper anyway, so.
Well, it has to be note, it has to be fully noticed, yes. Okay, so, as I said, two items before we go to anything the commissioners wanna bring up. Um, received notification today that we are getting eighty-four thousand dollars for the new playground we're planning on putting at Radnor. We got that notification today.
That's not the Rileywood Playground, that's the.
That's the Radnor Playground, correct. So the second thing, uh, this afternoon, Matt received from Woodmont Properties and forwarded on to me, and I forwarded it on to all of you late today. Was Woodmont sent us a letter indicating that, um, you know, going through the history of, of what has occurred with the project. And that they understand, um, they've been following closely everything that's been going on. Um, and the perspective from the public, and they are willing to come to you and do either the one-twenty unit plan or the ninety-eight unit plan. Having said that.
A closed session to talk about negotiation.
Okay.
Right, this is, I haven't even read this letter, so, it came today.
Sure, I mean, could you summarize it in publicly, I mean, and then we can go into private to actually talk about our response to it?
Yes.
Yeah, is it, I mean, yeah, it's. I, we're disagreeing, Frank, so, you break the tie, would you rather talk about it, would you rather read the letter?
We're not allowed to talk about it publicly.
But we're not talking about, we're listening to it.
No, no, I.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, before we start our discussion, it's contract negotiation.
Oh, right, yeah, no, I agree with you there, but our response, we have to go into private, but to hear their offer, I'd rather have it on the record.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, yeah, no, neither do I.
Okay, so, they've come back, as I indicated, instead that there's going to be, um, they're, they're offering the hundred-and-twenty unit plan. Or the ninety-eight unit plan, and then followed that up with a conversation, and indicated to me that. They are, they understand that this late notice that there's not time to necessarily discuss it. But that there possibly is a way to, on the same. Size property, add a couple of additional units, um, which would bring more revenue in for the town. But you could do, you could approve something, um, with the ninety-eight as a minimum.
Can you clarify the same size property?
Yes, I'm sorry, they, I'm sorry, with a decrease, if you make the decision, so you have a hundred-and-twenty at the eight-point-two. Um, and you have the ninety-eight. At, I believe it was.
Six.
Yeah, six acres, um, so they believe that on six acres, they could get. Additional units, not significant, significant additional units, but, but a few more units, which would then bring a bigger purchase price. And a, and a bigger pilot.
And would the units be a mixture of market rate and affordable?
Yes, if you increase the number of market, then you would also receive an additional, um, affordable housing unit.
This isn't a comment, this, this discussion, or, I'm sorry, is there anything else in the letter?
No, so that's, that's, that's the public information, and then you would have any further discussions on the options in quotes.
So the offer prices are.
The offer price would change with additional units.
Okay.
Get a higher, you would get a higher purchase price from them. And obviously then, the more units, then your pilot would decrease.
Sure, the public information on the ninety-eight unit for four-point-three million dollars is the sale price for sixteen.
Correct, that is the same as, as previously discussed, yes.
I just. No, that's right, we weren't talking about the open space, we're talking about the sold land, it would be six, which would save you seven-point-one-five acres. Uh, for open space, yeah. Yeah, fifty-four percent, so, no, so we're correct, we're talking about the same thing, uh, just a different, you're thinking about the open space, we're thinking about the, the sold land. Uh, and that's the comment I wanted to make, uh, it's a comment that, uh, from open space advocates. I just wanna really just be clear about this, uh. Although it's a disappointment that we can't save all of the open space. At, uh, the east side of Hopkins Lane, where the west side is saved. If you think about it, from a town-wide, probably, a town-wide solution. We purchased nineteen-point-two acres from Bancroft. That was the east and the west side, uh, that included six acres. Uh, five acres that went to the school board in a land swap, and, and a single, and an acre that was carved out to have a generous. Property and buffer for our, one of our most historic properties, um. I just remind you that it also saved eight acres, permanently created open space at Radnor. No more is the estate section of town worried about anything. Happening at Radnor Field, other than kids playing. Uh, if you take the eight plus the six. If we choose ninety-eight plus the seven, we turn a nineteen-point-two acre purchase into twenty-one acres. Of open space for the residents of Haddon. I'd love even more. While we turn lemons into lemonade. I just wanted to say it out loud.
So we will continue that discussion in first session, is there any other items that the commissioners wish to bring on?
No, we had a discussion earlier, uh, so, I actually will save it for closer.
Okay.
Because it's something that we, it is a negotiation.
Okay.
Uh, so. Inquiring minds to find out later.
I just wanna bring up one thing, I'm gonna put it on the radar for commissioners moving forward, I brought this up past, it closed. And it never went anywhere, and since I consistently get asked by parents of teens and older adults. For more community space, and we're not doing that with Law Worth, the building that is currently the sixty-five club. Was through a handshake agreement from the nineteen-fifties, allowed exclusively for the use of retired men. Many of whom do not have to be, nor are they residents of Haddonfields, and I've identified that as problematic. Being a woman that lives in Haddonfield, I don't know that an agreement like that would be lawful today. So that's something that I would hope in the future gets addressed, and that property either gets made into. A legitimate community center that anyone and everyone can use, or that we are charging for use for non-Haddonfield. Residents or groups. That's something that I, you know, thought was important, and I wanna state it publicly, because I've tried to make it a priority behind closed doors. And I thought with progress on Law Worth, there would be opportunity to even use that as an affordable site. And move the sixty-five club and any other groups that need it spaced to a community facility at Law Worth, but that isn't happening, so. I just wanna bring that to the attention of taxpayers and identify that as something that I hope others will address in the future.
Thanks, Paul, uh, I do, yes, I wanted, before we go, uh, there is one more item that was on my list. And that is an update on the brownfield grant, uh. You, you had mentioned last time that we might hear this week, have we gotten any indication?
Yes, on Thursday, they sent a request back to the engineers, asking clarification on the cost. Associated with the delineation of it, so, um, I believe that was Thursday or Friday. So I anticipate they'll get their answer from that, um, and then hopefully we'll be hearing shortly.
And could you tell us what it would actually buy? In very high level terms, not, not.
Yeah, so, brownfield funds are generally used, um, to clean up. Hazardous sites, the landfill would qualify as that. Um, it typically is not given to a town to clean up a landfill that pre-existed. That has been already switched to fields, however, because we are looking to potentially redevelop it so significantly. Into something far better and bigger than what is currently there, um, they have opened it up to potentially allow us to participate in the program. Um, it would, um, back in late ninth, late seventies. Um, early eighties, Haddonfield was required to close the landfill. Uh, they started all the paperwork and went through, I'd say ninety percent of the process. And got to a point where they got approval to put fields on top, and then kind of went like this and built the fields and just went on. But the issue is that, you know. Fifty years later, now all of a sudden you're dealing with erosion, um, and the cap on the landfill is not what it was. You know, you have certain areas that are only six inches, where it's supposed to be two feet, um, you know, and you have. Settlement of the debris causing hollow spots and, and sunken areas as you go back, if you look at the pavilion, it's a great, you know, example. Um, and so what this would do, part of what they're questioning is because, not this past summer, the summer before. We had them go out to determine how much the cap of, how much of the cap was still there, and they did a huge number of borings across the whole area. The problem is, we believe that the landfill also goes beyond the gardens. Into that cleared area a little bit, and under the pavilion, based on what's occurring at the pavilion, and. So we have to finally delineate the entire area of it, um, before they, we can move on. So the first part initially was to get funding, this first part grant was to get funding. For just finishing the delineation, getting, recouping all of our, our expenses that we spent two summers ago. And then finalizing the recoupment, um, they tied it into the second grant that we would apply for. Which was the full redevelopment of those woods, um, that is a seventy-five percent grant. So if we receive that, seventy-five percent of the cost of the plan that has been developed or is proposed. So if we receive that seventy five percent of the cost of the plan that has been developed or is proposed, I should say, would be covered by Brownfield's funding and then the borough would only be responsible for twenty five percent.
But can we clarify, because I've brought this up before and it went nowhere, that we would need to take the steps to officially designate it into a redevelopment plan, which a lot of people will come out and that's why I was pro- proved last year when I said, can you start the process? Development because that designation getting Brownfield's money. And I didn't, I didn't want to throw out to Prose Woods parents and families that, oh, we're going to build this beautiful thing and we're going to get a seventy five percent match and we do all the paperwork of the grant. And then the state turns around and says, you don't have the designation because that's planning board and us. It's months of action.
They, but but in applying for the grant, you don't have to have that process done. You just have to.
Oh, I know. I wanted to start it. I'm just reiterating for the public record how important it will be because people will take that and twist it and say, oh, they're trying to develop Prose Woods. And that is, yes, develop it as recreation, not housing, not commercial space, nothing, but I know we had a lot going on last year, but that would have been fantastic to get started. So I hope that there's a continued forward movement on that. Because it could be a ten million dollar project that we spend two and a half, similar to the police station being seven and we spend two point two.
I would say to be fair to the public though, you can explain it in a different way. So development plans, so we have a redevelopment plan on Bancroft for construction. We have a redevelopment plan on Boxwood for historic preservation. We would have a redevelopment plan at Prose Woods for recreation. So there, it just means that we designate an area in need of fixing. Whatever that fixing is.
Correct, and we can't build anything but recreation.
Of course, because it's already green acres. Which is, which is so like the playground at Radnor. We couldn't build a structure, right? Well, we could as long as it had athletic or recreation type of, we could put. We can't put house.
We can't put housing on Prose Woods.
And this goes, would be the same thing to talk about. This isn't a negotiation point because it would exist any way you slice it. The remaining open space at Bancroft after we sell, develop a land will be deed restricted passive recreation for that very reason. We've already said what we'll tolerate on that land. Then it's a blank canvas for the historians to come up with the picture and the story and the plan of what we'll do with inside that box. You know, I talk about boxes, right? So the box would be passive recreation. But inside that box is a blank canvas. So we look for the community to come up with ideas to say, is it walking trails? Is it Venice Beach and we just chuck a lot of weightlifting stuff out there. I mean, I'm joking. Kind of, I could use some work, but it's how you explain things, uh, and it's also when you explain things.
Good point, Frank. I know, I stole your thunder. I apologize for that.
But like, I mean, Prose Woods, I've had a lot of conversations with people in Prose Woods and people ask like, well, how hard can it be dealing with like, you know, E P, which I said, yeah, my dad owned his office in Haddonfield for forty years and he spent twenty years trying to get an NFA on that property so he could sell it. I said, so like, it it takes a while, you know? And I used to have, you know, an old boss used to say, it takes like twenty four months to have a two-year-old cow. So in this case with Prose Woods, I mean, I think when the time is right, when we have approvals, when it looks as if there's a there there, then there's a chance to get people brought into it. I mean, our design is kind of like a a what if or in a perfect world, this is what we'd like to see and stuff like that. They may come back and say, there's no money there. They may come back and say, you can't do that because you can't put a structure on it. You can't, I mean, there there's countless other things that, you know, so I think when the time is right, when there's a path to success, there could also be a path to failure. So you can't do anything with it. Here are the reasons why. Then we say, okay, well then, what can we do at Radnor? Or what can we do at this field over here or, you know, kind of start developing, you know, our our next steps here. So I don't want everyone to shout from the rooftops that we have a a path forward across woods. We're we're still some ways away from that, so.
Because if we don't get this funding.
We still have the problem.
Well, we're going to have to still close it and the cost for closing it is estimated at two point five million. And that's just to put the cap back and to put grass seed, doesn't even include sod.
Unless they tell us that we have to put a layer and ventilation. I mean, there's a, there is there's a lot of other stuff that goes along with that too, that.
Correct, because now end rules are changing, although we're the rules changing, we are fortunate enough that we fall under the rules and regulations that were there in the seventies and not the rules that took place in nineteen eighty four, eighty five and after. So we do get to qualify for whatever the closure was at that time.
Thanks, grandfather.
Again, because they, because they did do ninety percent of the process. It's in there, it's they never finalized it.
Sure, I always thought that where there was capping, there was flooding because of the water couldn't even drain. Where they, where it failed is actually dry.
It is, you know, concrete on top of, you know, all of.
Water can only go so far and then it just sits.
But the bigger issue too is just a lot of erosion. And, you know, we have, as I said, like six inches in some areas where we're supposed to have two feet.
Yeah, and you make a great point, Frank. I mean, it's, we provide the money and the canvas and then bring the community in at the right time to do the visioning. And what the town wants and then we execute.
Anything else before we go into close?
The air conditioning is on, isn't it?
Well, it's keeping everybody awake. It was a, it was a gloomy Monday. Hold us clean.
All right, can I have a motion to go into closed?
Motion second.
All in favor? Any opposed?